They were in the old plant and she was done, they were in the huge.
Yeah, I went toward the new plant. Pretty wild.
Yeah.
The time is four thirty PM Pelican Rapids City Council meeting of twenty five February twenty twenty five is called to order. I'd ask those in our council chambers if you have not signed the clipboard yet, please do so before you leave this evening, and also ask everyone to put their cell phones on vibrate. Just a reminder this evening during our meeting, we're going to recess at five PM for a public hearing, and then after the public hearing, we'll go back into our city council meeting. Rule call members, Daniel?
City council member Steve Strand.
Yep.
Council member Shelley Gummeringer. Council member Kurt Markraft.
Yes.
Council member Dawn Perrin.
Yes.
Mayor Brent Frazier.
Here. Want to welcome each and every one of you in our council chambers, those joining us by Zoom this evening. Please remember our council meetings are on Pelican Rapids YouTube channel as well as Channel fourteen on Wednesday evenings. Just a few announcements for the next couple of weeks. Thursday, February twenty seventh, ten to eleven is conversations with the mayor at the library. Remember on Sunday, March ninth is daylight savings time, so remember to set your clocks ahead and lose an hour of sleep. And then our next city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March eleventh, four thirty PM at the city, here at the city council chambers. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? If none at all, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone here for citizens' comments? Anyone for citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, additions, deletions to the agenda. Any additions or deletions? Any additions or deletions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I will read. Item number four, A is approval of council minutes from February eleventh, twenty twenty five. Four B is approval of accounts payable listing. Four C one is financial report, which is in your packet. Four C two is utility report for January, which is in the packet. And four C three is a liquor store report. Item four D is park board minutes from October twenty first, twenty twenty four, and also four E is planning commission minutes from November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Motion to approve. Second?
I'll second that.
Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Let's jump down to item number seven, twenty twenty five proposed pool rates and wages, and there was a scale that were in your packet. Lance, were you going to speak to that?
Ah, yes. Okay, so pool season's coming fast here. Daniel and Brian and I met and kind of tried to come up with some proposed pool rates and some wages for the new pool. You can see, well, we reached out to other pools in the area to see exactly what they've been charging in the past. These daily rates and season passes and things like that are very competitive to what's happening in the area. They're, some of them are a little higher than the other pools, some of them are a little lower. It's just, it seems like a good middle of the road. The season pass for a family seems very reasonable. We certainly want to, we have this new pool, we want people to be able to, be able to use it. So I don't know if there's any questions on those daily, or the daily or season pass, or swimming lessons, or anything like, anything there? Any questions on that? Or does it look doable?
Any questions from the council? Brian, do you have any comments?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay.
The next part there is the proposed wages for the lifeguards and things. There have been a couple lifeguard applications that trickled in. Are we up to three now?
Yep.
So we're just thinking in order to make it a little more attractive for both the director and the lifeguard position is to bump those wages up a little bit. The proposed wages here are twenty-two dollars an hour for the aquatic director. Lifeguard with water safety instructor certified, so they could do swimming lessons would be seventeen fifty an hour, and then a lifeguard for seventeen. And then, as an option, we have that front desk concession attendant where they wouldn't need to be a lifeguard. That's only if we don't get enough lifeguards. Maybe we can have a staff member just being in the, in the building doing concessions, doing the front desk stuff, and that would be fifteen fifty an hour. But we're really not going to advertise that one until we absolutely need to, because we'd really like to have everybody there as a lifeguard. And once again, we kind of researched other areas, what they're doing. These, these are, would be very competitive for lifeguard position, so hopefully it attracts, attracts more attention and more interest.
How many lifeguards need to be on duty at the same time?
We're working on that right now, getting some clarification. Right now, the way the state signed off on it, we only need two.
Oh, really?
And one attendant on the waterslide, but I question how he has it laid out, because he has nobody in the diving well, lap swim area, so.
We're going to clarify that, and, I mean, even with the minimum, we don't necessarily want, maybe, I mean, if it's going to be busy, we don't maybe necessarily want just the bare minimum. We might, we want the flexibility probably to bring.
Right.
Extra in if needed, especially on busy holiday weekends or whatever.
What were we talking, one time about five people?
Um, at one time, yeah.
Yeah.
But I guess total staff ideally would be probably right around the ten to twelve.
Okay, okay.
Just because of different summer vacation schedules and things like that, so.
Okay.
That's, that's the goal, but honestly, I'll take as many as I can.
Yeah, definitely.
To get that open, so.
How many hours do you plan on having it open?
Yeah, I do have some other notes here, just to give you the information. So noon to seven, seven days a week, but then eleven to noon, there'll be a lap swim from, from, for Monday through Friday. So that's basically the hours. It's seven days a week, twelve to seven, and then the lap swim, eleven to twelve, from Monday through Friday. We are looking at putting two family passes, have them available down at the library for checkout for people who maybe can't afford, or whatever, they're in town for a day or something and want to just check out the pool. They could check out a pass from the library and go to the pool for a while. And then we're also looking at putting, or giving like fifty daily passes out to the park. Just give them to the park employees out there, and if they see families at the campground or something, they could pass them out and, and help get the word out for our new pool.
Okay.
So we're looking at doing that as well.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the twenty twenty five proposed pool rates and.
I'm going to approve the proposed pool rates and wages.
I hear a second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Thank you.
On that same note, we just want to quickly, since we're raising these rates with the lifeguards, and they're typically, in the past, they've coincided with the summer help and the parks and things. We propose just to raise the parks help, summer help up to seventeen dollars an hour as well.
Okay. You need a motion on that?
So they need a motion.
Add it, Steve?
Sure.
Add it. Is that one employee? Well, we don't want to lose the park help to be a lifeguard. Add it to.
So the motion second, they agreed to that, so.
Yeah. Just add it to the motion was cleared.
You want to revote on that then, Daniel? You're fine with that?
Everybody's good.
Okay, okay. Okay, let's jump up to item number five. West Central Initiative Solar, we have Griffin Peck here, and there was a handout in your packet, and just to let you know, Griffin, we got, we got till five o'clock, and then we got to go to a public hearing, so, okay? Just want to give you a forewarning on that, and you're going to talk about the proposed solar sites on public buildings in Pelican.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Griffin Peck. I'm the climate resilience officer with West Central Initiative. That essentially means that I work with communities on energy and environmental issues, and also help them prepare for things like extreme weather. I got in contact with Lance back over the summer, and we, with the opportunity to put solar on one or more of the buildings, publicly owned buildings here in Pelican Rapids, and we did some initial analysis, did some tours around town, got a look at the different buildings, and we ended up analyzing this building and the fire hall, as well as the liquor store. Couple things I do, I do a basic building analysis, so I just look at how much energy is being consumed on site, and about, you know, how much it costs, and what the total kilowatt hour consumption is. That helps us get an idea of what size solar array makes sense. Then I perform a rate analysis, where I take the stated rates on Otter Tail Power's website, and I take, you know, twelve to twenty-four months of data, and then apply the energy adjustments and all the other different little things on your bill altogether to figure out what the average rate is for the buildings. And then finally, I perform a solar analysis. So we'll start up at the top on the building analysis side. And so this building, the city hall police station, uses sixty-one thousand kilowatt hours a year, which costs the city roughly six thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. And of that sixty-eight hundred dollars, about five thousand and fifty dollars is directly related to the consumption of energy. The difference between those two is customer charges, demand charges, other things that aren't directly related to consuming energy. For the liquor store, it's a similar story, consumes a little bit more energy at seventy-nine thousand kilowatt hours a year. Again, total cost of nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, with an average of the, of sixty-eight hundred dollars of that going to the consumption of energy. And then finally, looking at the fire hall, as you might note, it consumes the most energy, and yet it still costs the least. That has to do with the rate that it's on, and that it consumes high energy in a different way, so it consumes it at a high demand, but it goes up and down a lot. And so they charge the rate differently, and we'll get into that in a second. But for the reason that the energy charges on this building were only four thousand three hundred and seventy dollars, it didn't quite make sense to continue with a rate analysis, because the rate paid in the building, as we can see further down, actually, so I did do the rate analysis, sorry about that, but of the average rates of the three buildings, that one's average rate was four point nine cents per kilowatt hour, whereas the city hall, this building, and the liquor store both had an average rate of around eight and a half cents or eight point nine cents per kilowatt hour. And the reason that that piece is, that number is so important is because that's what determines the value of energy when it's consumed on site. And so we know there's a standard rate for when you produce energy on site and send it to the grid. It's eight point three cents for solar arrays that are under forty kilowatts, which is what we're planning for, or what we're proposing for these buildings, rather. And so finding out that average rate gets us a good idea of how much is the value of the energy we're producing on site, and in the case of the fire hall, a lot of it would have gotten consumed on site, and so it would only be worth four and a half cents per kilowatt hour instead of the much more valuable eight point three cents at the retail rate, which makes the payoff on that building a lot longer. And so moving into the solar analysis piece of it, I looked at this building and the liquor store, and both buildings can support a fifty kilowatt DC, forty kilowatt AC solar array. And what that essentially means, the AC DC difference there, is that the AC nameplate capacity is derived from lab testing, where they have a bright light, and they shine it at a perfectly ninety degree angle on the panels, and that's how they rate the panels. In the real world, you're never going to have those conditions, and so you overbuild on the DC side so that you can consistently hit forty kilowatts on the AC side. Whereas if you only installed forty kilowatts DC, you would only ever produce maybe thirty-five, thirty-six KW on the AC side, because in order, again, to hit that, you have to have these perfect conditions that don't exist outside of a lab. And so, that locked up on me. And so what we're looking at then for this building would be a ground mount array, because this building has a flat roof, and you have neighbors upstairs, and that makes it all kind of complicated. So you'd be looking at a section of land on the hill just outside here, and the cost for the array, the upfront cost would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But then there's a lot of incentives available, so the primary incentive is a rebate from Otter Tail Power Company, and that covers roughly fifty percent of the cost. It's seventy thousand dollars. And then the other two are the IRS tax credits that are available to cities through the direct pay program, which allows non-taxable entities like cities and nonprofits to take advantage of tax credits, whereas they were locked out of that system before. And so that would be a thirty percent base credit, which for this project would be fifty thousand dollars, and then an additional ten percent bonus, because we intend for all of the projects we're doing as a part of this cohort, to use made in America materials. So made in America solar panels, made in America steel, fully compliant with that to get that extra ten percent. So then, as you can see, that ends up being a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in incentives on that hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. The balance after the incentives would be roughly fifteen thousand dollars, but then the building's going to save forty-six hundred dollars a year in energy costs. And so that equivalent, equates to a three-year and three-month payoff for when the array becomes cash flow positive. It means that over the course or the lifespan of the entire array, the city would save a hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars.
What is that lifespan figured at?
Thirty years. And the panels typically come with a twenty-five year production guarantee, and that guarantees to eighty-five percent of their initial generation capacity. So if you had, you know, at thirty years, if you extrapolate that out, it goes down to eighty percent. So if you have a five hundred watt panel installed today, in thirty years, it's still going to reliably produce eighty percent or four hundred watts. And so we say thirty years, in all likelihood, these panels could last fifty or sixty years and still produce energy. Moving on to the liquor store, this one is a little bit less money because it's a roof mount system. So the total cost, still the same size array, just mounted differently, it would be on the roof. Total cost for that one would be one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Again, you get the seventy thousand dollar Otter Tail pop rebate, and the thirty percent base credit plus the ten percent adder credit for a total incentive of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Balance after the incentive is twelve thousand five hundred. That building saves a bit more money per year, because it's the eight point nine cents, whereas this building's the eight point five cents. And so your annual energy savings at the liquor store with this array would be five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, meaning that it would become cash flow positive in two years, five months. And the total thirty-year lifetime savings would be a hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. In my opinion, if we're, we're going to choose between the two, it makes more sense at the liquor store, just because it has that faster payoff, and it's a little bit less expensive to install upfront. And then the following couple of pages have some of my analysis to show you how I got those numbers. And so the first one is looking at the city hall police station, and the second one, these are in pages four and five. And the second one is looking at the liquor store, and there are two different graphics that kind of overlaid on that page. The two, the graphic on the back is the cash flow analysis. So that shows your export savings, or the cash that Otter Tail will pay you from the power that's pushed onto the grid off-site, and then your direct electric bill savings, which is from consuming the energy produced on site and not consuming energy from the grid. And the way that I calculate those is in the superimposed graphic, which shows the module degradation over time. So like I talked about, they lose some of their generation capacity over time, and so we can account for that by, you know, if we assume that in, you know, and here I have it, that on the year installed, it would produce thirty, thirty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-seven kilowatt hours that would be consumed on site. And as you can see, we tie that to the module rating, so that by year thirty, it's producing thirty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-six kilowatt hours. Then similarly, there's that cost over there that we calculated for the energy that's consumed on site, that average rate, and that's tied to a one point five percent year-over-year escalator to account for raises in energy prices from the utility. That's a more conservative escalation rate. Other projects typically put it at three percent per year, but I wanted to give a conservative estimate here, so that the project has the opportunity to perform better, but trying to outline a worst-case scenario here. And then similarly, for the liquor store, you can see that same analysis down there, where it's all tied to the consumption and the production of everything. I'll stop there for questions. There's an FAQ on the very last page as well, but be happy to answer them in real time as well.
Any questions from the council?
Well, the city, city doesn't own this building, so that could throw a hitch in the giddy up, so to speak. So the liquor store still would, in my opinion, remain most likely victim.
It's a quicker payback.
And maybe I'll clarify too. I'm not asking for a yes or no on solar tonight. I'm asking for a yes or no whether to include these details in a joint RFP. We're working with Lake's region service cooperative, and they've developed a RFP for all of our communities that we're working with to sign on to, so that when we go up for bids, we're not bidding out one forty kilowatt project, but we're bidding out ten forty kilowatt projects, which makes it a much more attractive offer, and will hopefully bring down the cost as well. And so tonight, I'm just looking for the approval to add the details from this analysis for the liquor store to that RFP. Then I'll come back in April or May, once we've gone out, collected bids, chosen a bid, with updated numbers containing relevant information to what was the chose, what's in the chosen bid, and then at that point, you'll make the decision whether or not to move forward.
How, I have another question. How does, does this tie in at all with the proposal that Otter Tail provided us, I believe at our last council meeting?
I did do some research on that, because I was, I'm a pretty big energy nerd, so no, it's not connected to that. That, I believe, would be for solar out on the east side of town, on the, like, on a ground mount, and that's like utility scale solar. Yeah, but that's not connected to this. I mean, not, not in any meaningful way, at least.
Lance, do you have any comments or recommendations?
One question. So they would have to choose between the library, or between the liquor store and here for this RFP? You couldn't just put them both in there and decide later, or?
Yeah, we would want to have the building in there so that we can include the relevant information when we send out the RFP. So I'd include the energy analysis from just one, but otherwise, we're, you know, some communities, I analyze four or five buildings, so if we have ten communities and they submit all five buildings, that gets to be a lot of data to start sending around, so.
Yeah, there's just one big concern at the liquor store is just the, the snow, that we have issues with that now. We're just wondering how that's going to affect with the solar panels up there, how that will affect it in the future, if there's going to cause more problems or issues, or what?
What specific issues are you having with snow over there?
Well, especially.
So it slides down, the snow tends to cap it correctly.
Hmm.
So.
You'll have a, likely a similar problem with solar, where it'll slide off the panels, but that is dependent on the first layer of snow, I will say. I used to work for the city of Morris, and so they had solar panels installed when I worked for them, so I got some real-world experience living and working with a solar panel or solar arrays. And like, if the first layer of snow is wet snow, and then it freezes and gets really cold, and then we just have that little flaky stuff, it won't slide off, because that first layer of snow will like freeze to the panel surface and keep it from, like, if enough snow accumulates on top of it, it'll insulate it enough that that ice won't melt, and so then it won't slide off. But if you have wet snow, and it doesn't freeze overnight, it will slide off. But.
So what's the maintenance with these? You, you think that they can have snow sitting on them if they're going to collect sunlight?
So they can, and that's actually built into my analysis, is a thirty percent reduction in production in the winter months. And, you know, like, the first year I worked at Morris was a year we had a bunch of snow. We had a, one of our flat roof arrays was covered for two months, didn't produce any energy. But that's okay, because you don't produce as much in the wintertime anyway, whereas in May, June, July, you're producing six to seven thousand kilowatt hours a month on a forty kilowatt array. In December and January, you're only producing fifteen hundred. And so if you miss out on production days in the wintertime, it has a much smaller impact on the financials of the project than if you were to miss out on production days in the summertime. In terms of maintenance, that's typically included, like, the cost for maintenance is included with the proposal that you get from a contractor. So typically, a contractor will have their own warranty and craftsman, you know, workman's warranties and stuff, and they'll also have a maintenance schedule that they'll provide to us in the RFP that we'll be able to bring back to you. Typically, maintenance is coming out, inspecting the wiring connections, making sure that the inverters and everything are still connected properly, ensuring that there aren't any animals or vermin up in the array, and then cleaning the panels. But really, there's no, there's not any moving parts, so it's not like a typical, like, you know, fleet vehicle where you have to get it maintained on a certain interval. Unless there's, you know, a storm damage or something, they're not necessarily going to come out for anything. So it's pretty minimal. Maintenance and insurance costs is usually around fifteen hundred dollars a year, so if you're still saving, you know, five thousand dollars, it's not as much, it's thirty-five hundred dollars, but it's still a good savings, so. Were there any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah. Steve loves them. They're pretty.
We've got five minutes. With five minutes, we got to wrap it up.
Which one did you say would be easier to install? Were you comparing?
Easier to install? Well, if this building isn't owned by the city, I'd say the liquor store will probably be the easier one, just so that your, the contracts will be easier to negotiate. Whereas like, so I, I was under the impression that the city owned this building and that they rented.
This part, we own the lower half. So we would own this, and we would own the land where the, where the solar panels would go, so there wouldn't be an issue. If, if we were to go on the roof, then, then it's a shared space up there, but we own this part and out where the solar panels would go, so that's not.
So as proposed, I'd say they're of a similar difficulty, because since you own the land out there and you own the roof at the liquor store, they, they'd both be fine. The buildings can remain operational during installation, so it's not a big deal, because everything's routed through one disconnect interconnect switch, so they can build everything behind that and have it disconnected from the building, and then when everything's in place, they just flip the switch and turn it on. So from my perspective, I think, like I said earlier, the liquor store makes more sense because of the quicker payoff, and I think long-term, it will probably be easier to maintain. Like, the, the thing I think about is if you have a ground mounted array out here, you might have to put up fencing around it, you might have to like make sure that people don't come by and vandalize it since at ground level, whereas if it's on a roof, there's not, you know, as much of, those variables aren't as present, so.
Anything else?
How did this get started, anyway? Like?
Kind of took inspiration.
Pardon?
Oh, go ahead.
No, how did it?
So took inspiration from the city of Morris.
We've got two minutes.
Yes, so I'll be quick. I worked for the city of Morris for two years as their sustainability coordinator. They have solar on four of their buildings, and they did it before any of these tax credits were in place, so they installed it just using the Otter Tail rebates. And, you know, the, there's, you know, at the city hall building I worked at, they haven't paid a bill there in two years. And so part of it, with West Central at least, was if there are communities in our region that are eight hundred people, five hundred people, three hundred people, and we can save them four to five thousand dollars a year, that could be really transformative for their, like, utility, like budgets and stuff, and could save, you know, operating costs as well. So that's kind of why we did it. Took inspiration from Morris, and then my colleagues started doing some initial outreach in the spring, and then I was hired on shortly after to do the analysis, these presentations, et cetera.
You came to us? We didn't, did we seek out solar?
No, this is something they're doing in several communities around the area, so.
Yep, we've connected with about ten communities. Battle Lake, Vergis, New York Mills, and Ash, we have all signed on to the RFP at this point. I'm here tonight. I'm in Fergus Falls, and Purim, community of the whole meetings tomorrow, so.
Any other questions? So Lance, what should the motion include?
Just to be included in the RFP for the, and then just specify the liquor store project in it, if that's the way you want to go? And keeping in mind, when you come back, I mean, we, if we're not comfortable with it?
Yep, you can still say no. Yep.
Okay, okay, yes.
Like, I don't like solar cells.
Right.
So we're looking for a motion to move forward with this.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the liquor store, solar.
Or second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Thank you, Griffin.
Thank you so much.
We'll see you again in.
You may. Yes. Well, I'll see you at the next EM Planning Summit.
Good presentation.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to recess our city council meeting. The time is five PM. We're going into our public hearing, which was set at five PM for facilities plan for underground utility and streets improvement. Remember during this public hearing, we cannot make any motions, discussions and any motions will be made after we reconvene our city council meeting. So we have Mr. Bob Schliemann here from Apex Engineering and he's going to present this facilities plan to us. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council and staff. Yeah, I'm here this evening to talk about a facilities plan. So I provided an agenda, hopefully everybody got that for tonight's meeting and just a little background here. So we were approved a couple of months ago, or maybe it was actually in January, I can't remember exactly when it was, to prepare a preliminary engineering report to basically document, discuss any areas where we think the city's sanitary sewer collection system still consists of old vitrified clay pipe and/or the water distribution system consists of cast iron pipes. So I did, as part of the agenda, attach a map. And there's, on that map, there's areas that are red, blue and green. And the areas that are red, we think have both vitrified clay pipe, sanitary sewer and cast iron pipe water main. The areas in blue, we believe only have old cast iron pipe water main. Now, they may have sanitary sewer as well, but if they do, that's thought to be newer PVC. And then the areas in green are the areas that we think only need to be updated as far as the sanitary sewer collection system goes. So that's a little bit of background as far as what we're talking about this evening. The reason that we're doing this at this time is not because the city is interested in moving ahead with the project at this time, but it's because we're going to hopefully get the city in position to receive funding when you do so. So the next thing that we're going to talk about is the Public Facilities Authority, which is a funding organization through the state of Minnesota, actually provides low interest loans and for projects that qualify grant dollars. Now, the trunk highway fifty nine and one oh eight project, on the sanitary sewer side, you actually did qualify for a substantial grant for, for your sanitary sewer collection system improvements. On the water main side, you did not. So it all comes down to financials and things like that, so. And then like I mentioned, we're here this evening to talk about a preliminary engineering report, which is part of a facilities plan. The facilities plan includes, again, the PER. It's a cert mailing list that the state of Minnesota uses to send out environmental notifications. There's an environmental information worksheet that we have to do. We have to hold a public hearing. That's why we're here this evening. And then also we have to pass a resolution, the city of adopting the facilities plan. So there's also additional documents. I don't want to get into those. I've hit the main ones. And the second thing that we need to do is I'll work with the city staff to also submit documentation to put you on a list, or two lists, one for the water, one for the sewer, called project priority list. So we're not going to get into the nitty gritty on that tonight. I think at this time, what I've got is I've actually got some slides that I put together. This is from a PowerPoint. This is just going to summarize why we're here, summarize what's in the preliminary engineering report. I know Danielle and Lance, I think, actually have hard copies of the PER, electronic copies as well. If you want them, you can get a copy from them, but it's a pretty lengthy document to go through. So to go through, basically, again, quickly here is we did a PER to summarize which areas within the city of Pelican Rapids are thought to have vitrified clay pipe, sanitary sewer collection and/or cast iron pipe, water distribution piping. What we're going to talk about is the project areas, project needs, improvement alternatives, proposed improvements, preliminary opinion of costs, funding and then user rates, so. Here's that map that I was referencing before. Again, the red areas are where we think that right now has old vitrified clay pipe sewer and old cast iron pipe water main. The blue areas are thought to have only old cast iron pipe water main that needs to be replaced. And the green areas, which are minimal, are thought to just have old vitrified clay pipe, sanitary sewer collection infrastructure that needs to be replaced. So as you can see, fairly large area within the community. The interesting thing is down in that southwest portion, we think everything is up to date down there. So nothing in that area. Project needs. So wastewater collection infrastructure, again, consists of vitrified clay pipe, thought to be at least sixty years old. We don't have good records on a lot of this stuff after you get before, I think it's nineteen, probably seventies. Or, yeah, so we don't have a lot of good documentation on the exact age. A lot of these areas, a lot of times have cracked pipe, offset joints and tree roots. I've got a photo of some tree roots over there. As far as the water distribution system, again, piping consists of old cast iron pipe, thought to be sixty years old. A lot of times what happens is once that pipe gets to a certain age, you start to see breaks. I know Brian mentioned you had a, have a break right now, correct? And what we see is once you start having breaks, a lot of times it just gets worse and worse with time. So again, we want to get you in a position when it comes to the time where you're, you're like, you know, we've got an area of town here where we're having too many breaks. We've got to do something. Hopefully we can save you time to, to get going on that project. And then a lot of times the valves and hydrants are unreliable. I think going through this fifty nine and one way project, we found that out that there's, there's a few valves out there that don't work, which becomes a challenge during construction to shut water off when we need to. So those are some things that we see. And even as far as hydrants go, if you do have a fire, I'm sure there's nothing more frustrating than not having a hydrant that works when you need to have it work, so. And then surface and storm sewer, a lot of times that's in poor condition as well because a lot of times that was constructed at the same time as the underground utility infrastructure. And either way, a lot of times to get to the sanitary sewer and the water main, we have to dig the street up anyway, in the curb and gutter and sidewalk. So that's got to go either way, so. Improvement alternatives for the wastewater collection infrastructure is do nothing. Obviously, that's not an option if it's in poor condition and needs to be replaced. We can reuse trenchless technology to rehab some of it. That is an option, but a lot of times when you get to this collection system where you have a lot of service laterals and stuff, that can be more expensive. And if you have offset joints, tree root intrusions and things like that, a lot of times lining that pipe doesn't work so, so well. They can't even do it if you have offset joints and things. So that's not a lot of times a viable option. And then the last one is simply just reconstruct using traditional open excavation. And in this particular situation, it is the recommended alternative given the existing infrastructure. Water distribution, kind of the same thing, do nothing. If you're having water main breaks, your valves don't work, your hydrants don't work, service laterals start failing. That's really not a viable option. Again, there is trenchless, trenchless technologies such as directional drilling that can be used, but when you get into valves, hydrants, service laterals, it just doesn't work real well to use trenchless. So the obvious viable option then is to reconstruct again using traditional open excavation, so. For surface and storm sewer, do nothing. If you have to dig up the street to get to the utilities, not viable. So again, a lot of times what we wind up doing is the same thing as the fifty nine and one oh eight. If we have to dig up the infrastructure, you wind up reconstructing the surface stuff as well, so. Pretty straightforward. Proposed improvements, which wastewater collection system, replace the old VCP collection piping with new gasketed PVC pipe. Replace the service laterals again with PVC gas, gasketed pipe with cleanouts for locating purposes. And then replace any existing manholes with new precast concrete structures. Water distribution system infrastructure, again, install brand new PVC water main, install new service laterals. A lot of times the smaller service laterals, one or two inches, we use HDPE now. It used to be copper pretty much all the time. Now we use HDPE and then new, new valves and hydrants, so. And typically operators like a lot of valves. So surface and storm sewer, basically replace it. Pretty straightforward, so. Preliminary opinion of cost, I'm sure it's absolute probably sticker shock for everything on that map to reconstruct it. We're looking at about thirty one, thirty two million dollars. Now, again, we're not, we're not doing or committing to doing anything this evening. Likely what happens is when we do these facilities plans, what cities will do is they'll basically do smaller projects at a time, you know, over time to arrive at that thirty one million dollars or thirty two million dollars. So very preliminary in nature and is subject to change and will change, so. And in the, in the report, I actually have every street, I think, broken down. It's a pretty, pretty, pretty good sized table by sewer, water, curb and gutter, sidewalk, storm sewer. So it's a pretty detailed, detailed table with costs in there. And the nice thing about doing this at this time is in the future, if you do want to do, let's say, one street or a portion of a street, all that information is put into a spreadsheet. If you want to do that two years from now, five years from now, ten years from now, we just update the unit prices, so. Funding, we are definitely going to pursue PFA funding. That's why we're doing all this right now. There are other funding sources out there, but PFA we found is typically the, the best one to pursue. Again, it's for public entities, for infrastructure improvements, low interest loan and what they call principal forgiveness funds. We call them grants, same thing. It's their fancy term. Right now, if you moved ahead with a project right now, you would probably get up to eighty percent principal forgiveness, forgiveness or grant for your sanitary sewer system improvements. So keep that in mind. That can change over time. So if you have some debt service that goes off the books, you could possibly fall out of that grant category. So that's something that maybe Lance and Brian and myself should look at as far as, you know, where we're at on the financial side of things. So something to keep in mind. User rates, we have to put this in there. This is required. Why? I don't know because to me, this information is, it isn't even applicable at this time. So what we do is we make some assumptions that you're going to do all these improvements at one time. You're going to get a, get a two percent loan for twenty years from the PFA. Nothing's going to get specially assessed. You typically do specially assess. So I need to put something in here. For the sanitary sewer side of things, if we did all of that today, your rates would be to, go up at two hundred and eighteen dollars per year and eighteen dollars per month per equivalent dwelling unit or single family home. For the water, it's a, it's a little bit more. It'd go up by five hundred and seventy six dollars per year or forty eight dollars per month per EDU. The assumptions are the same. Again, I have to put this in here. Is it relevant? In my opinion, no, because you're not going to do all this stuff next year. You are going to specially assess. For me to go through and do the financials on all this stuff, you know, incorporating special assessment stuff would be a lot of time and effort, which to me is nobody's getting the bang for the buck when I do that at this time. But I, again, I have to put something in there to meet their criteria, so I did. User rates, again, actual user rates will depend on schedule for reconstructing the various areas discussed, which funding options the city chooses to pursue, if the project qualifies for principal forgiveness funds, final project costs, and if the city chooses to specially assess a portion of the project costs. Just wanted to throw that disclaimer in there, so again, have to have it. Thank you. Any questions?
Is this money pretty highly competitive at this point?
You know, it's, it is. It's highly pursued, but we have had being proactive. We've had very good luck at getting projects through the system and funded. A prime example is your fifty nine and one oh eight project. We were proactive on that project purposefully because we knew that MINDOT wasn't going to wait. So we took a little bit more of a proactive or aggressive approach on that one, knowing that we've had projects before where we get in line and the legislature doesn't pass a bonding bill. Delays everything. Well, we didn't have a choice on that one. So we got that project in the hopper, got it on the list and everything worked out in that case. So we have actually been taking a more proactive approach like we're doing this evening, even though you as a city probably aren't really thinking about the next project quite yet because we've got one to finish up. But when the time comes, you're in a better position to move ahead, so. Yeah, it, it isn't like it used to. I mean, when I first started, for the first, first probably fifteen years of my career, it was pretty much a bonding bill was passed every even year. You could count on that money being there. Now that's not the case anymore, so. Yep. But there's a higher, a lot of need. Obviously costs continue to go up. They add barber requirements and stuff like that. It only drives project costs even, even further up. So it's highly sought after. But if you do qualify, a lot of times what you do is whatever qualifies, let's say, right, like I mentioned before, for the sanitary sewer side, once you get qualified for that funding, if you do a project, a lot of times they'll fund up to eighty percent of it, which is a very good, very, very good percentage, obviously. And then the remaining portion, a lot of times is one to two percent money. A lot of the communities we work with, I don't remember Lance, what our loan interest rates for, for Pelican Rapids, but a lot of the communities we work with, it's one percent or just above one percent, which is extremely good.
I think it was over three for this.
Yep.
What it ended up, but.
Yep. Pelican Rapids might be a little bit different. And then once you, if you qualify for grant, then you can choose either a twenty or a thirty year loan. If you do not qualify for grant, you have to take a twenty year loan. So.
Any other questions from the council?
Is there any limit to how much the city can bond?
There is. Yep. And through this program, the max grant you can receive is five million.
Five million.
So if you, you know, eighty percent of, I think it's six million, two hundred and fifty thousand or something like that gets you to five million. I don't remember what the exact number is, but. So you don't want any projects, you know, and, and please realize the PFA has two programs, ones for the sanitary sewer and ones for the water. And they look at your systems completely different. So you can get up to ten million dollars on any given project, but five would have to be for the sanitary sewer and the other five would have to be for the water. Yep.
Any other questions?
Good questions.
Is there anybody online that would have a question?
They can speak now if they want, but.
Anybody online have a question?
Nope, looks good.
Brian and Lance, do you have anything input on this being, you worked with Bob. Anything you would like to add?
The only thing I will say is we sat down and had a couple of meetings. We think we've got our bases covered as far as what areas are still VCP sanitary and which areas are still CIP water main. Not probably a hundred percent guaranteed, but based on Brian and Lance's knowledge, the records that we've got, we think we've got everything covered, but just a disclaimer, don't know, you know, a hundred and ten percent, so.
So if you prioritize areas, it would be the wastewater that you would?
For, from, from a financial standpoint, I would say yes. It would either be the, the red or the green areas. But the re, but how you qualify for grant dollars is it's all based on financials. So the, the, you basically have to show financially there's a need for grant. And right now, your debt service and O and M costs for your sanitary sewer are significantly higher than for your water system. And that's why you qualify for grant. So basically what it comes down to is if your O and M costs are fairly steady for your water system, the only way to increase your system cost to qualify for grant for water in the future is to increase your debt service. So that's the, the, the game that we play. I mean, we've got some communities that they do projects and get their debt service up there, so they qualify for grant. And then they just keep doing project after project, year after year, because if they qualify for eighty percent, they take their eighty percent and they do as much as they can and just keep doing projects until their, their systems are basically replaced or up to date. But that's obviously financially a challenge too, because if your debt service or in O and M costs are that high, your users are probably paying fairly high rates and then just keep doing projects. There's still a twenty percent component that you have to pay the debt service on. So that's where you sit down and we start talking financials and spreadsheets and game planning and capital improvement planning. That's one way to look at it, but if you're just looking at, okay, which areas are structurally the worst in town, that's probably a question for Brian. You know, he probably has in mind where I've had water main breaks. And I don't know if you've had a ton of breaks, Brian, but you know, you can probably pick out the areas where these are where I've had the most water main breaks. We would want to probably target those areas first. Or this is where maybe I've had some sanitary sewer problems. We have to jet it a quite a bit. We've got a lot of tree roots. From just an operation standpoint, that's the other way to look at it. Which areas are structurally the worst and should be replaced first? So. The other thing is just logistically in town, the areas, you know, if you're going to do a project, it probably makes sense to, let's say, split this area into one or two projects or three project areas, instead of having the contractor do two blocks here, two blocks here and two blocks over here. It doesn't make sense to split everything up and disturb multiple areas of the community when they can mob in, focus on one area of the town and get that done and get out. So.
Any other questions? I just want to let those online know that there is no one in our council audience this evening. There is no one here this evening. Any other questions before we adjourn? Any other questions before we adjourn our public hearing? Any other questions? Any other questions? Hearing none. We'll adjourn our public hearing. The time is five twenty PM. We'll now reconvene our city council meeting, speaking to Resolution two zero two five dash zero four to approve and adopt the facilities plan that was presented this evening.
I make a motion to approve Resolution two zero two five dash oh four, approving and adopting the facilities plan.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same. Motion carried. Anything else, Bob?
No, I don't. Does anybody have any other questions for me this evening?
Probably will when we get home.
Enough of you probably have my number, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yes, you too. Let's go down to item number eight, Sharon Park Bath House. And Lance, you wanted to talk about that.
All right. So back in October, the council approved design intent to get some plans together for a new bath house in Sharon Park. So the total cost of that is going to be twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So we met with Scott, kind of went through the preliminary designs. He gave us a very estimate, I mean, a very vague estimate of what it was going to take to build that. So initially, it's just going to be, we were thinking, just the footprint of the bath house is now. And we just decided three bathrooms on each side, single stall, one toilet, one shower in each. So six total bathrooms in it. He comes back with a number of about six hundred thousand dollars to get that thing done. So that was a sticker shock. So we decided to try and, we would like to reduce that down to two bathrooms on each side, and that would still be sufficient for any kind of expansion that we do there. That would be good for any kind of amount of camp sites that we have there. But the kicker is, of course, now it's going to cost more to design it, to scale it down. And another thing that we're going to add, so we looked into now applying for the outdoor recreation grant. So you can't apply just for a bath house. It's not eligible. That's like a secondary thing. So a primary one would be to upgrade one of the campgrounds into an ADA compliant site. So in order to reduce, due to the design cost, to reduce that bath house down to those, just the four bathrooms, and then add the design and stuff for the ADA campground, and then tying in, so there's a sidewalk that comes from the assisted living. We've had some complaints there about wheelchairs and scooters and stuff being able to get in and access the park. So we include that to get the tar and stuff around to solve that problem as well, which will help on our grant application as well. But... So in order to further that design, reduce it down and things, so now he comes back with another seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars to reconfigure the design and things. For a total cost of the design to thirty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. So I'm just here to ask for that extra design cost. Because if we don't, I guess if we don't pursue it, then we can't apply for that grant either. So we kind of need these plans in place.
What makes those grants accessible? Like if you dropped it to four bathrooms and just included, say, a storm shelter for public safety on the end of it for campus?
Well, that's the thing. This will be a storm shelter as well. I didn't include that. So the design of this, of this will be considered a storm shelter as well. Yes. But the criteria for that outdoor grant, outdoor recreation grant, that alone, just the bath house alone, will not qualify for it. That's why we want to add...
I was just curious.
They seem to always add something that's inclusive.
Right.
The last time we got this grant, it was for the porn place at Peterson Park and the new playground set that was...
ADA accessible.
That was a different grant there, I think, wasn't it? This outdoor recreation grant, we got that for the bridge before.
Okay, maybe that's what it was.
And so when, on their site visit, then they make sure that everything is ADA compliant. And I think we had to add...
Add that ramp.
Ramp, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Big curving ramp.
And it was applied, this outdoor recreation grant was applied for the pool as well, but we did not get it for that. But we did get it for that, for the pedestrian bridge in the new Peterson Park there. So it is very competitive. Jordan is going to be working on it, and she'll come to the next council meeting with, we need to do a resolution and things for it. But in order for her to be able to do it, we need to have these, this design in place, and then the construction costs, the estimates for her narrative for that grant as well. So there is, there is money there. We're using that, the trail head, well, the trail money from Otter Tail County that we didn't have to use for the trail. We're using some of that for the trailhead building. And we're using, we're starting to use that, or we decided to use that for the design of this building. So there is money there to continue this.
Sounds good to me. Something needs to be done there.
What would the motion read?
Just to increase the design cost for the bath house, increase it seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
I move for that.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Discussion.
We should maybe fix the rocks. One of the ones we have. What's wrong with it now, the rock?
It's not even, not even...
Oh, it's so pretty.
Can't fix it at all. Bring it to code. Impossible.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same. Motion carried. Thank you. Item number nine, street and park report. We have superintendent Brian Olson office this evening. Brian?
Very, very brief. Very brief tonight. Yeah, we've really, it seems like it's been a long time, but got to plow a lot of snow there early, and now you look outside today and you're like, what the heck? It's all gone. Now we're scraping slush off the streets. So, yeah, so we have spent a lot of time with that cleaning so downtown. The last one, I did have Aggie Construction come down and get it all done in one evening just because it wasn't abundant and it would have taken us quite a while. So...
Quite different than in the past?
It's not nearly as fun. It's, definitely are new challenges, just things we're going to have to get used to and move along with. So I have been, when we're not doing that, we have been fixing equipment, both our street sweeper and Vactron with our Jetter Vac. We lost all the pressure on that at one time, so we had to get some parts and so we could start vacuuming again when we need to. Bob did allude to it, but we do have one water main break right now that we'll be digging into tomorrow over on First Street Southeast. So I think that's three main breaks on that in the twenty-three years that I've been in the city. So that might be an area we want to look at starting one day, isn't that, that First Street Southeast section?
Is that right in the low spot?
No, there was one there prior, but this one is actually at Fourth Avenue and First Street. So we will, there'll be a section of First Street from Fourth to Fifth that will be out of water for some time tomorrow. We have notified them, and so they're aware of it. But we're not set it all down to dig down through frost. It's never fun this time of the year, but we'll, we'll get that. So... And I know I talked about this before. You had asked about the crosswalk signs in Detroit Lakes. And I think when I talked about it, you weren't here. But I'm just going to get back to that quick, just so everybody knows. After talking with MINDOT, not Detroit Lakes, because they couldn't handle, I had to go down to the central office and talk to them. So the way we're set up, if we use these in the street, which we can, but they cannot be offset like the ones in Detroit Lakes. I don't know if, maybe everybody hasn't seen, if this is just a picture. But they, they will need to go in the center median, and so they can't be permanently mounted. They'll have to be like the ones we have had with the weighted heavy base because they have to be able to, to be hit by a car, basically. Because of our center median is trying to drive over, they have to be able to be spring loaded so they'll bounce back up. So that's what I found out about these. And I even asked in the one minute, what do we do where we have right and left turn lanes, you know, outside of the mains downtown? And she said, they just go right by this crosswalk there. So in other words, they're going to get hit every time somebody's coming to dig a left or a right on, on those intersections. But so that is, that is what I found out through MINDOT.
Did you say, do we still have some of those or not?
I don't know if I'd still call them. I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to replace all of them. They have been hit so many times over the years. But yes, we do still have the mounts. So that's about it. So... And that, the parks and the things, there's, bath house discussions have been going on. That's about it. So it's been quiet. So that, anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
So you've only had one break so far?
Well, I've got one that's still a small one, very small, that we'll, we'll get in the spring, that I mentioned back in the beginning of January, I believe. But yes, knock on wood, we've only had this one that is, is big. So it's just a six-inch cast iron pipe is what's over there. So... And that generally will happen, I see, over the years, that when it's been really cold and then it starts to warm or the frost moves the ground, and that's when we have issues. So...
And Brian, how do you feel about sharing a parking lot at the pool with...
With Pelican Valley Senior Living? I think that it's, it's probably the best idea we have out there to get public parking over there, is collaborating with them.
So pool parking would be...
I think similar to what it would, what it was, is Street and Trinity Parking Lot. I mean, I don't think that they're going to use that entire parking lot all the time. I think a lot of weekends are going to be, you know, they don't have as many staff on during the weekend. So...
Any other questions?
I'm nervous about lifeguards, but I won't bother you.
Lifeguards, we have three applicants so far. Spread the word. If you know anybody, spread the word, spread the word. Lance has his bus license, so he's going to drive them all to class, and we just need to get a good group of them. So...
So somebody without a license can man the concession stand, you said?
If need be.
If need be, but I really want all lifeguards at first, just because of rotation and different times and things like that. So if it comes down to it and we need somebody to be inside, sure. But right now, I'd really like lifeguards.
Did all the snowplows hold up good this year?
Ours?
Yeah. Do you have any, much, do you have much maintenance to do?
No, always. We, well, the two thousand and three, we had down in Fergus getting fixed, and that was that sensor that I mentioned before, and that's what, so far, that trucks, we just baby that one along. So...
Any other questions for Brian? If not, is there a motion to approve the street park report? We have a motion second?
I'll second that.
Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same. Motion carried. Thank you, Brian. Item number ten is PFOS source identification and reduction grant. And there was some, there was several pages in our handout this, this evening. Lance, you want to speak to that, please?
Yep. This is more of an FYI, but I'll take a motion just to approve the application here. But this is, so I met with Greg Stang and Dennis and then this new Tim Gradke from People Service. So that's a new position that they have with People Service, and his position is Director of Consulting Services. And he'll be a good addition just with all these new regulations with chloride and PFOS and all this. He can help us navigate through. We've got this PFOS management plan, and now this chloride management plan and all this stuff. So he'll really help us be able to navigate this. But he found this, this grant, and he basically filled everything out, and we kind of discussed it when we met. But this will just help pay for some of those new requirements now. So we have to pay for the PFOS testing of our biosolids and all this PFOS, we have to try and identify the sources and all this kind of stuff. So just the testing and being able to implement that PFOS management plan, this will help us. It's a, just a ten percent match, and the match can actually be employees working on this stuff. So that, I mean, the regular, the wages that they're taking and the time that they're taking to take these tests and things can be part of that match. Plus, it's going to be for two years here, so we have money in the budget for some of this PFOS testing. So that'll, that'll, that'll cover the match that we need anyway. So... And there's several pages here just because there's, there's been addendums to this grant, but that's all on the state's end. It's just kind of them, kind of loosening the requirements, who can apply for it, basically. So they had a lot more requirements right away, but now these addendums are just showing that they kind of freed it up. It's not, initially, you had to be part of the PFOS monitoring through the state, and you had to be underserved community and all this kind of stuff. So these addendums are just kind of fixing those requirements to open it up to more. Otherwise, are there any other kind of questions about it? I'll send it in tomorrow if it gets approved. So we have, it looks like we have a good competitive chance of getting it.
Questions from the council? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same. Motion carried. Item number eleven, administrator report. Lance?
Since the last meeting, I attended an EDC meeting, attended the Otter Tail Lakes Country Association member consultation, met with People Service and discussed the SIU agreement, the chloride variance, the lagoons, and that PFOS grant we just talked about. Met with HOL meets about the wastewater chloride levels. Brian and I met with design intent and Apex Engineering about the bath house plans, attended an ordinance committee meeting, met with area MCMA members, attended an EDA meeting, and Kurt Markraph is the lucky one to be the next, on the EDA board now. So...
Congratulations.
Welcome, Kurt. Congratulations. Met with Danielle and Brian and discussed the pool rates and wages, attended an Otter Tail County Emergency Preparedness Advisory Committee meeting, attended the Fire Department Annual Township Meeting at the Fire Hall, worked with the city attorney on the street vacation in the Southwest and the quick claim deeds for the needed, that are needed to transfer those two industrial parts, lots back to the city, and attended a pickleball meeting. Any questions?
Did the person that had that lot just accept the fact that we're taking it back?
Yep. I think both. So there's two up there now that are coming back. They're both planned.
I mean, the one that was, we're having some trouble with, for sure.
Yep. It seems to be going, yep.
Very good.
Any other questions for Lance?
You know, are we wrong not to let, you know, advertise those lots are available? I mean, they just happen to know.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that.
I felt a little uncomfortable about that when we were talking.
Because I have, I have heard somebody say, well, how are we supposed to know that that's available? I've heard that.
I want to say Jordan did put out something on those industrial lots. I know she's been advertising this one, but I want to say that she did put something out about those industrial lots. But I don't know how to reach... out about those industrial lots, but I don't know how to reach more people with it, but...
On the website, I guess. That's it. I don't think it costs, I don't pay, pay to print it in paper or anything.
No.
No? How did you know about it?
Somebody showed up and asked for it.
Well, and I know years ago, they were listed with realtors and stuff, but nothing ever happened, but...
Kept driving through there.
There you go. No, I have no idea.
Well, not everybody reads the paper. Not everybody reads the website.
Well, yeah, but it doesn't pay for us to pay to advertise it.
No.
You know, a website at least is a, is an effort.
This day and age, there is no really one ideal.
No.
Call City Hall.
People don't even do that, so...
Anything else for Lance?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 12, Mayor's Report. Just a few items the last couple of weeks. February 13th, attended the Food Shelf Annual Meeting. February 19th, attended the ordinance meeting here at City Hall, and also attended Pelican Rapids Economic Development Authority Meeting that same date. Last Sunday, attended the youth PR meeting at the library, and today, Tuesday, they're at the Capitol talking to our legislatures, which was, they were looking forward to that. And the legislatures always look forward to youth coming down there to speak to them. Yesterday, Lance and I set up the, planned the meeting for this afternoon, and also last night, attended the Pelican Rapids Fire Hall Annual Township Meeting. Any questions? If not, seeing no other business, motion adjourned?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same. Meeting adjourned.
Got that?